Okay, my name is Dave Bellis. I'm the chairman of Transportation Building and Technology. We're here for a public hearing to consider a special use permit application submitted by Summit Ridge Energy LLC to develop a 2.125 MWAC commercial solar energy facility in Fall Creek Township near Marlborough Head, Illinois. Like call this meeting to order. If you have any cell phones, please mute or turn them off at this point. I would ask the clerk to call roll.
Dave Bellis.
Here.
Plus post. David McClary.
Here.
Ryan Hindcamper.
Here.
Joe Zanger. We have three present. A quorum is met.
Okay.
Yes.
At this point, I'm going to turn this hearing over to our facilitator that's representing Adams County, in Mr. Barney Beer. And thank you for running.
Facitator, can you hear me now? We're here to consider the application submitted by Summit Ridge Energy LLC. That's 789 North 55th Avenue. There has been an agenda posted, and my purpose here tonight is to kind of make sure that the hearing proceeds in an orderly fashion. And having said that, I'm going to make a couple preliminary remarks. First of all, as far as how I hope that this will proceed is that after my preliminary remarks that will swear in the witness from Summit Energy, Maura Cronin, she'll present evidence. And at that time, if anybody has signed in, be subject to cross-examination. But I don't think anybody's signed in for cross-examination purposes, but I'll come back to that in a moment. After that, there will be statements and presentations of evidence from interested parties. I know there are some people here that want to speak. Anybody that is here that wants to speak, I think they'll be allowed to speak and given a reasonable amount of time. If you haven't signed in already, I'd appreciate it if you would. And that's just for the sole purpose. If you look to my left, we have a court reporter, Kathy Genenbacher, taking everything down. And just so she gets the names correct, it helps if we have those spelled out. After that, there can be questions asked by the committee. And I'm going to define committee unless there's an objection from Mr. Bellis or the other members of the Transportation Committee, that the committee will be as a whole. So the committee would not only be the Transportation Committee, but any of the county board members that are here tonight. Having said that, I want to go over a couple of things.
Can we put on record which county board members are here?
If you would, please.
For record, we got Brent Fisher here from the county board, Tim Finley, Travis Cooley, Steve McQueen, and Marvin Kirkoff.
Thank you. Just by way of preliminary remarks, what I think, the way to look at what we have before us is that Adams County passed an ordinance effective February 1st of 2024 in regard to the siting of solar farms in unincorporated areas of Adams County. That ordinance was based upon a statute that was passed by the state of Illinois. And according to the state of Illinois, the regulations that the county can impose cannot be more restrictive than what's in the statute. So you're basically following along the statute to see if there is compliance. There are certain things that the county has discretion over as far as requiring certain agreements and follow-up. The way to look at this tonight, it's the hearing in regard to the siting of the application, whether the location is approved. That is basically the first step. Assuming for the moment it is approved, at some later time, they would apply for a building permit, and the county would have to approve the building permit, presumably that if the siting is approved, that all the requirements that you're going to impose tonight, if you get that far, that they've met. For example, road agreement for any damage that may be done to a road if they build, a decommissioning agreement, posting bond to make sure 40 years from now or 30 years from now that they've got the funds to take it down and some other requirements. What I've passed out tonight, and Jim Frankenoff, who's present from the Adams County Highway Department, drafted this. Basically what he did is he took a look at the statute, he took a look at your ordinance, and probably just as important, he looked at what other counties have done. And I think this is primarily based upon, but not only of what's been done in Vermillion County. And it looked at findings of fact and ordinances that they have passed. So as you hear the presentation tonight, and I know it's a lot, but if you can, follow along and see if the requirements are being met and any comments that you have. You'll notice at the end, the very last page, if you approve the siting process, there are certain conditions that you can make, and there are 10 listed there. I'm not going to name all 10, but just so you know that it's there. The first one is prior to the commencement of construction of the commercial solar energy facility, the applicant shall obtain a building permit from Adams County. And then the next one talks about a road use agreement and so forth. I will tell you that in addition to meeting with Jim Frankenoff, and I met briefly with Mr. Bellis in regard to how we proceed with this, I did have a conference with Georgine Zimmerman Supervisor of Assessments, and she asked that we make as a condition of requirement, if it's approved, that there has to be a legal description for tax purposes. So we'll get to that. If, I don't know if any of the board members have any questions at this point. If not, I think that we would proceed to presentation by Summit Ridge Energy and a presentation by Maura Cronin, if I've pronounced that correctly. And if you could sworn in. Well, I'm sure there will be. Okay, could you get sworn in, please? And if I may, before you start addressing the board, Summit Ridge Energy has submitted an application, and I reviewed it and others reviewed it. And I've marked it as exhibit one, which I presume is probably what you're going to testify to substantially from. So I've marked that as an exhibit. It's been made available to the public and the county board members. Having said that, the floor is yours.
I'm just going to do a quick introduction, but then also could we pull up the slide deck as well?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So hi, thank you to the Adams County Board, county staff, and the community for allowing me to present on behalf of our project today. My name is Maura Cronin. I represent the company Project, which is 789 North 550th Avenue LLC, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Summit Ridge Energy. Summit Ridge Energy is a long-term owner and operator of community solar projects, which means that we are involved for the long haul for this project between 25 to 40 years. We have over 50 community solar projects in active operations in 23 counties across Illinois and another 40 community solar projects in active construction across the country. I'm here to present our special use permit application for 2.125 megawatt community solar project. This project will be located at 789 North 550th Avenue, which is why it's our LLC, and the parcel is currently used for farming. This project is seeking a special use permit in accordance with the Adams County Ordinance number 2024-02-001-009 regulating commercial solar energy facilities. This permit application is also submitted in compliance with the Illinois state regulations for the siting of commercial solar facilities, which is what Barney talked about earlier. This project will be directly, sorry, this project will be connected directly overhead to the local Ameren Grid, which is a 12.4 KV overhead infrastructure. We've completed the supplemental review and a site walk with Ameren in April. And Ameren's detailed cost estimate is due back on June 18th, and the interconnection agreement will fall right after we accept that cost. This project has received all of its environmental approvals and studies. It's entered into an agricultural impacts mitigation agreement, which is called AMA, and a draft decommissioning plan's been submitted to the county with our special use permit. The project will be including a non-hazardous, sorry, this project will include non-hazardous solar panels, inverters, and access gravel road, a pollinator-friendly vegetative solar coverage, and will be surrounded by a locked fence. I'm happy to answer any questions with the board members or the community. And I just wanted to, it's only a couple slides. I don't want to talk a lot. I just want to listen and answer questions as they come up. But yes, this is kind of like what our project would look like. If you don't mind going to the next slide. Yep. Yes, yeah, the last, well, are you talking about our operating project or the project that I last permitted? Yes, yeah. I can't say the specific one because we have, I would say, probably over 20 that are in construction right now or operating already. So we've built more projects in the state of Illinois than any other state, and we're the largest community solar operator in the state of Illinois for the whole country.
That was Marvin Kirkoff. If you could, if you've got questions from the floor, at least the first time, identify yourself for the court reporter.
I just, I don't know how to specifically say which one because we have so many that are under construction right now. But we do a lot of projects in Vermillion County or permitting in St. Clair. I just permitted a project in Champaign County, the city of Champaign. So we work in Jacksonville, too. I mean, there's a bunch of different ones. So yeah, so this is just putting on a map where our solar project is in relation to Quincy. If you don't mind going to the next slide. So this is our proposed project. I thought this would just be helpful visual, so you can see the pollinator plants, the perimeter fencing, the screenage that will be on there, our acreage for our property, and just kind of the relation to other, the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. And this is the more zoomed in version. We have a bunch of different copies here people would like to see as well. And then this is the next slide, if you don't mind. And this is just basically how community solar works. So many consumers are interested in community, or sorry, many consumers are interested in solar power but can't install panels on their home. So this is like an alternative. They're able to reduce the cost of energy, and this is very real. We also do this where I live as well. And basically, everyone's able to save money and you're able to have a more renewable source of your energy. The next slide, please. And like I talked about, the lower rate of your energy bills, it's a cleaner energy. The state of Illinois is committed to 100% clean energy goal by 2025, or sorry, 2050, which is one of the things that we're working towards. The native pollinator plants, our seed mix, which we will also submit as well. That is native pollinator friendly. We use it on all of our Illinois projects, so we know that it takes well to the soil. And let me add trees as well. And then the next slide, yeah, just my contact information. So basically that, just want to do high level. If you have questions about the project, I'll be here to answer them. But thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
At some point, as far as going over the application, as far as the findings of fact and recommendation to the Adams County Board, you've been given a copy of that. Are you prepared to go over that? Yeah, unless somebody wants to make a statement at this point, I thought we'd go into the nuts and bolts as far as what's pending before the board, if you would. Go ahead.
Do you want me to read through the fact of findings?
Well, you can do, if it's in there. For example, I think it consists of what, 5,400 solar panels is what the application says.
So just the blanks?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So yes, our project will consist of 5,400 solar panels. The construction of the project is estimated to take six to nine months with an anticipated completion time of 5/1/25. It's anticipated that the racking system, which will be pile driven, augered and set, if the pile driven, so the pile driving process will take approximately two weeks, can vary based on site and weather, which will generate noise of approximately 120 decibels from 10 feet away, which is far beyond, you know, everyone's much further than 10 feet away. So then the next slide. Do you want me to go through?
If you would go to.
Section seven, because that's not.
Yeah, if you go to page three of.
12, to design installation review.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Excuse me. So design and installation review.
This is page three of the findings of fact.
Yeah, it's A, design and installation review, section A. Certification of the structural engineering, structural engineer registered in the state of Illinois that the design of the facility is within accepted professional standards, given local soil, subsurface, and climate conditions. We are, we will be compliant with the industry standards. We have final geotech report certified by a third party, and the racking will be installed accordingly. Section B, power and communication lines. All wiring between the solar panels and the solar farm facility substation shall be underground whenever possible. Applicant wants to use the industry standard cab between panels, which is above ground wiring. And then the next section is an interconnection, it's like BB. An interconnection agreement has been or will be obtained. So the Ameren IA, like I touched on earlier, is expected on 6/8, sorry, in 6/18. Section C is warnings, placement of reasonable visible warning signs within the facility. Yes, the main gate and at major equipment pads, there will be warning signs. The height, this, we will comply with this, the maximum will be 12 feet. And then E, we comply with one through B for all of the setbacks. All setbacks meet or exceed the bylaws.
If you could, on E, because there's been some question in regard to the setbacks line, and I don't know if you've got a diagram that shows.
I don't have a diagram, but I can speak to what they are. So it's 85 feet from the frontage, which would be like closer in front of the property. I guess maybe if we pull up the site plan, that's probably the best way to show it, if you don't mind pulling that up. Maybe the next one, the black and white, yeah. So yes, this will be 85 feet from our fence line. And then it's 213 feet over here. 54 feet from that corner over there. It's 94 feet over here. And just so people are clear, it's the inverter, which is the thing that makes the noise, is 397 feet. And we put that intentionally in the middle of the project to control all the noise, any noise. And the noise is less than, let me just double check. It's, I can't remember if it's 38 or 28.
I'm going to stop you just right there, just for a moment, because I know at least one person had a question. Are you out?
Okay.
Okay, I just wrote down exhibit two on the diagram. I know Wayne Gallagher is present, and you had a question about setback lines. Before you do, let me comment to you.
Because this, I was just talking about property lines, and it's different from the lines to components of a butters, like Wayne.
Just mark your house. It's a great circle. There's a site plan for distribution, everybody has that, okay? And that's what I've marked as exhibit two, and Wayne's marked for his houses. I'm going to show you, this is the, he's got questions with that particular house. So if you can, in your presentation regarding the property lines and what you refer to as components.
Yes.
Actually, if I may, on your diagram.
Yep.
Why don't you point to, sort of, I can see.
So this is Wayne's.
Right, where it says, right next to it says proposed point of interconnection, is that correct?
So Wayne's house is actually right.
Okay, the square you've got there is a little off. The garage is up closer to the right of way. In fact, the edge of the garage is 25 foot from the south right of way line. Okay.
I just, can I, I was looking for the sound metrics, just to finish that thought. So on the inverter, the max sound during daylight is 35.8 decibels.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
If your thing isn't turned on or.
Can you hear me now?
Nope.
How about now?
That's better.
Okay, I'll talk louder, sorry. So the inverter, which is the component that actually makes noise, we intentionally insulate that within the project to reduce any noise that a butters would hear. And so the max sound decibel is 35.8 at daylight, and there's no noise at night because our solar panels are not producing energy at night. Just to close that thought. So for Wayne, your question for your setback. So to the fence line, which is the outside, sorry, this is going to fall. Right here, the fence line to your property is 156 feet.
From what?
For the fence line to the closest component of your house.
That, my garage is 25 foot from the right of way. The house is another 100.
So we'll have to look at it, but we're pulling this off of like the GIS that's available for the county.
Right, I know.
So, so based on the information we have, that's what, and I have been on site, too, when I met with Ameren.
Is the fence then up right next to the right of way? I'm confused there a little bit.
No.
Touch the fence.
So this is our right of way in the green, like this is the property.
Yes.
Our fence is here, and this is 83 feet in.
So a fence is a part of the component of the operation then. The fence is a component.
From the solar arrays, all these wrecking rooms. So it's 15 feet from the arrays, 15 feet, and then from the, from the fence line, it's 83 feet to the edge of the road.
So 80 foot, okay.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't get your name.
That's Wayne Gallagher. He lives across the street, he's a butter.
Hi, Wayne.
Supervisor, Fall Creek Township, since 92.
This Ryan Hindcamper is going to ask a question.
Yeah, so you don't live in your garage, correct?
Well, I spent a lot of time there.
It's not, but it's not registered as a residence. Okay. The reason I ask is just according to the verbiage is it's the nearest point outside wall of a structure of an occupied building, community building, which it's not, or 150 feet to the nearest point of an outside wall of a non-participating dwelling or residence, which it doesn't sound like it is. I'm just looking at how it's worded here, so am I misunderstanding that? Okay.
So just for clarification, you've, there's a garage, and then there's a residence. Is the measurements that you're referring to, is that from the fence to the residence or the fence to the garage, if you know?
I believe it's the fence to the residence, the 156 feet, which I think checks out with what you were saying, Wayne, that your garage is closer to the property line, but you don't live there, like Ryan was saying.
Well, if you talk to my wife, she says that I live up there.
Yeah, understood. Are we good to move on past setbacks? Okay, cool. So next is.
Excuse me, Mr. Beer, could I just clarify then? If I understood your measurements correctly, there's six feet of leeway currently, is that right? There's 150 foot requirement, and you said it's 156 feet?
To the closest of butter, yes.
Okay, so six feet, there's six feet of leeway. I just want to make a note of that, please.
Yes. And we're going from the fence line versus the solar array. The solar array, like I was saying, is an additional 15 feet. All right, so moving on to fencing. A locked fence of at least six feet in height and no greater than 25 feet shall enclose the community solar energy facility. Yes, a seven-foot fence with a 16-foot system setback. So I was saying 15, I'm sorry, it's 16 feet. G is screening. Facility owners shall install a living buffer or deciduous tree that shall be planted and maintained during the duration of the lifetime of the solar energy facility, sorry, community solar energy facility, beginning with the commercial operating date. The species of deciduous trees to be planted is a etuja, evergreen trees, which kind of looks like an arborvitae, if you're familiar. And the spacing, a number of rows that will be utilized, they're 10 feet apart in a single row.
If you could, on exhibit two, and this may be obvious to everybody anyway, but as far as where you anticipate the plantings will be, the plantings will be, it's marked on the exhibit, is it not? And how is it marked?
Yes, the squiggly line. It's basically the fence, you can't really tell the difference between. You can, do you mind going, actually, yeah, you can see it here. So yeah, so this is all trees, and then that is the fence line. So you just can't see the fence because it's literally fenced in trees right on top of it. But it's all very vegetative back here, which is why we didn't install, we're not planning on putting trees in. But when we're closer to community owners, that's when, landowners, that's why we have the trees there.
So this, Dave Bellis, there will be a fence, seven foot tall, plus the bush, or otherwise.
And the fencing, like I was saying, is just going to be where there's like close of butters. Not, the whole back area is all super vegetative, so it felt unnecessary. Okay, so moving on to, this is again kind of like GB. So it talks about weed control and the planting of vegetative vegetation shall prevent palmer, and it talks about different types of weeds, and it's a very long paragraph. So it says, yes, pollinator-friendly seed mix, we will comply with weed control measure. So H, facility owner shall install pollinator-friendly habitat. I already talked about this, so yes, pollinator-friendly seed will be used. I is lighting, there will be no lighting ever at our projects. J is talking about noise, that noise levels measured at the property line shall comply with the standards set by the state of Illinois. Pollution Control Board, placement of a generator or noise-producing electrical equipment shall be placed at the center of the project to the extent practical, which we did. Noise levels may be enforced by the Adams County or other regulatory body. So yes, we are compliant. K is performance standards, all state and national.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question? What is the noise level authorized by the state of Illinois in comparison to your noise you're going to be emitting from your facility?
I actually don't know that number off the top of my head, but I know that ours, like I said, was 38.5 for our decibels, which I know it's under. Sorry, I don't know the, I don't know the metric off the top of my head for the Illinois. And, okay, so let's move, keep it moving. K is performance standards. All state and national construction codes shall be followed. And it says, for purposes of this ordinance, the county adopts the National Electrical Code and International Building Code as amended from time to time. So yes, on all codes, we will comply with all codes. I is signage. Appropriate warning signs shall be provided at the entrance to the facility along the perimeter of the project, and sign at the entrance shall include the facility's 911 address and 224 emergency contact numbers, yes, on signage and the 911 address number. M is outdoor storage. Only the outdoor storage of the materials, vehicles, and equipment that directly support the operation and maintenance of the solar farm shall be allowed. Yes, may have a shed on site to store spare parts, we're still determining that. N is aviation protection, and we pass the FAA, which means we're not close to any airline, or not airlines, or airport. O is site assessment. Proposed grading plans, soil, and geotechnical reports submitted with guidelines for engineering and conservation practices. We can submit the geo- We can submit the geotech if requested, we have that in the final form. It's just not a requirement for the special use, so we didn't submit it. Um, P is endangered species and wetlands. National Resources Review Consult, Consultation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources or US Fish and Wildlife. Yes, we submitted ECOCAT, which is the State of Illinois Natural Resource Document, and the Indiana bat was flagged as a potential concern. After additional consultation, this request was terminated, terminated by, um, the IDNR in a two-five-twenty-four letter, which is submitted as part of our special use permit. Q is proof, um, on the agricultural impact mitigation agreement, which is called EMA. And a fully executed EMA was submitted, or sorry, EMA was submitted on one, four, twenty-four, and approved on February first, twenty-four. Um, R is submittal of as-built plans and plans within sixty days of completion of construction. Applicant will comply at the time of construction. We're not, um, able to produce any construction-level drawings because we have to get approval here first. Um, of our site plan, site plan. S is conformance with approved applic, um, applic, application and plans. Applicant will comply. Um, T, use of, uh, public roads. Applicant acknowledges that a public use agreement is required for this application. Um, so this road use agreement is in process. Jim and I have talked a bunch about it, talked about it with Barney as well. Um, there's no major issues, we're just talking really about the surety bond amount that we'll need to post for that. Um, and about the access that wants to be used and insurance. Uh, U is technical submissions. Technical submitted submissions prepared, signed, and sealed by Illinois Professional Engineer for the relevant discipline. Yes. So, operation review, section A. Annual review and report, submittal of an operation and maintenance report to the county. Yes, we will comply. B, emergency responders, coordination with the local emergency service providers. So, yes, we will do that. Uh, Jim, you could just let us know who we should meet with, provide those contacts. Um, there are no batteries on site, which I know was another question that, um, a community member had flagged. C is water, sanitary, and other waste. Uh, handling and disposal, considerations for existing wells, abandoned wells, water lines, and septic systems, not applicable, or not tapping into any utility, public utilities. Um, so will be no strain, um, to the utilities. Um, D is drainage system. Um, drainage tiled to be repaired, restored, or maintained. Yes, um, committed to compliance. Other considerations. A, liability insurance and indemnification, submittal of proof of insurance to the county. Yes, we will provide our COI, certificate of insurance, sorry. Uh, B, protection of historical or aboriginal sites. Coordination with the Illinois Historical Preservation Agency, or similar for the project. Yes, we adjusted our site plan based on feedback about architectural findings outside of the lease area. Um, so that, it actually just impacted our fence line, so we didn't have to change the array, which is great. And we have approval, and that was submitted, um, with our SEP. Um, C is decommissioning plan and site reclamation. Plan and submitted cost estimate. Yes, we submitted our decommissioning plan, and the cost was included. Um, the next section is, um, um, findings of the committee for general citing and project factors. Um, the estimation, sorry, the, it's like my worst fear, I hate reading aloud, sorry. The establishment, maintenance, or operations of the project, which will be detrimental to.
Yeah, yeah, at this point, those are, like, those are considerations for the, um, the committee to make. You put it this way, uh, I'm gonna ask if there's any questions of Ms. Cronin. And before, when I said the agenda, you had to sign in before you asked questions, unless somebody objects. When she started making her, her presentation, her comment was that she would take any and all questions. So it seems to me that if somebody's got a question, they ought to be able to ask it. Mr. Bellis is agreeing.
I agree.
Okay, so, having said that, are there any questions? Either from, but we start with the county board members first, if they have any questions now. And then if not, if there are any questions from the public, and Wayne, you don't have to identify yourself, but if anybody has questions out in the, um, out in the pews, if you would, identify yourself, please.
Do we want to use a micro mic for that?
Yeah. I can also just step aside, I wanted to grab water.
Well, it won't beep for court, but.
He can't press the, um, show him how to do it.
No, okay. Am I ready?
Are you gonna ask questions, or are you gonna make your statement? Not that I care, I just want to know what you're gonna do.
I, I guess I wanted to state some of the questions that I've had brought to me, and some of the statements brought to me.
Okay, very good.
So, first of all, I'm Wayne Gallagher. I've been supervisor at Fall Creek Township since ninety-two. And, uh, I'm here basically because I am the supervisor, and I've been contacted by local residents up and down the roads, and I have, or no one has any personal vendetta against anybody, Linda, or anything. I'm just stating a fact, and it's just what it is. Uh, I guess, I've, I've been contacted by different neighbors, and some of them were coming, and some was afraid of the storm, anyway. I had some notes and some things that they've looked up, and I've looked up, and I'll, I'm not as good at speaking as you are. I ought to give this to you to talk, because I, I, that isn't one of my highlights. But, uh, we would like to file opposition to the proposed solar, solar farm at seven eighty-nine North five-fiftieth Avenue, Quincy. Uh, we have been notified by a lot of the residents who aren't involved with the project, who oppose the project, and per, person, and currently planning to pass a petition through the neighborhood stating this fact. And research and talk to the residents informed that three are contemplating selling and moving out if this is approved. This is a shame. And this was all the country setting residents in the area with noise, electromagnetic fields, panel glare, removing cropland for sixty years. And I guess that, you wonder why the sixty years, if it's a twenty-year lease, uh, there are statements, and we found on where it, you, it's no good for farmland for forty years afterwards. So that makes the sixty years. Alter, altering countryside views, and unconfirmed health hazard, of which there are three different residents in the area fighting cancer within three hundred foot of the electromagnetic fields of the solar farm. And, you know, there's discussion on whether that is hurts or helps this fight, but it, it's still there. And does, does living next to a solar farm decrease the property value? New research from the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory has found that solar farms reduce property values within a half a mile and average to one and a half percent. This is as of March of twenty-twenty-three. How far should a solar farm be from a house? Most likely, when a solar facility is developed on a forest or farm, most acute for, for homes within one-tenth of a mile, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet of a solar farm, there is a seven percent decline in property value documented. Plus adverse effects extend as far out as one mile. Do the radiation emitted by solar panels pose any health risk? Electricity comes from solar panels, and when it is transmitted to the power grid, it emits a weak electromagnetic, electromagnetic field. A photovoltaic system, the solar panel generates current, direct, direct current, which is converted into alternating current with the help of a solar inverted. And this is a source of electromagnetic fields and radio frequency radiation. Accor, according to the World Health Organization, there have been no evidence that shows the solar panels are harmful to the human health. But, there, if there is any health issue that exists from low-level electromagnetic fields, then it is very small compared to other health issues occurring in the area. While most solar farms are safe to operate, they can emit harmful pollutants in the environment. Here are some potential dangers of living near a large solar facility. Glare, solar panels can reflect light and create glare, which can be a nuisance or even a safety hazard for nearby residents. Noise, inverters, and transformers at solar farm can produce low humming noise. Well, I guess she said it was thirty-five decibels, which I don't know what that is. I would like to hear thirty-five decibels, so I'd know what it, how loud it is, or what it sounds like. Is that an air horn sound, or, I don't know. I am curious of that, though. Chemical exposure. The production of solar panels involves chemicals, which some are hazardous. Particulate matter. The construction and operation of solar facilities generates particulate matter, which can be a significant pollutant. Arc faults, electro arc faults are high-power discharges of electric between two or more conductors, which can spark fires. Lithium-ion batteries, improper disposal of lithium-ion batteries may have negative effects on nearby residents. Other potential dangers include birds. Solar farm can pose a risk to birds, with reports of dead birds near solar farms. Land use and habitat disruption. Solar farms can replace crop fields and forests. Glare. Solar panels can reflect sunlight and create glare, which can be a nuisance or even a safety hazard for nearby residents. Noise, while solar panels itself are quiet, some solar farms have equipment such as inverters and transformers that can produce noise. Solar farms are not environmentally friendly. The amenity of neighboring property can be seriously harmed by secured boundaries and intrusion. CCTV is a highly unlikely, it is highly unlikely the land could return to agriculture in forty years' time. How recyclable are the panels? If the power lines are more than three hundred foot away, there should be no cause for concern. At this distance, EMF from the lines is no different than typical levels around the home. If the power lines are less than three hundred foot from the home, you may want to obtain an EMF measurement in your yard. Is it safe to buy house near high-voltage power lines? So high transmission lines warrant more caution than neighbor distribution when buying in nearby homes. While no adversity accepted safe distance exists, from guidelines suggest, living seven hundred to one thousand foot from the high-voltage lines is best to limit EMF exposure. This is as October twenty-seventh of twenty-three. We feel that there is ample property available, which is not surrounded by residents whose lives will be disturbed by the project in which to build a solar facility to send electric to some other area. Uh, like I said, my shed, which I know I don't live in it, but my wife says I do, is twenty-five foot from the right away. The right away is sixty-four foot wide. That means it's eighty-nine foot from the property over there. And, uh, just a few years ago, since I'm supervisor, I am involved in the road repairs. When the electrical lines went through, we had damage to our roads, and we obtained from them five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to overlay and resurface the road, which is still a good road. And I, I think, I don't know how much weight or gravel or everything will go over there, but I, I think it would be beneficial to come in from fifty-seven if they do anything there. So, like I said, thank you for your time and your consideration. But like I said, I, I know, since I've been there thirty-five years, I know a lot of people, a lot of people know me, and my butt gets real close to solar over the phone calls, so.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, it looks like you are reading from a statement, is that correct?
What?
You are reading from a statement that you prepared? Is that the same statement that you emailed Mr. Nekamp earlier?
Yes, yes.
If you have that, could you mark that as exhibit three? Here, may I have the other two? I, I sent that. Um, the county clerk also received written statements from Jennifer Oikr and an Angel Walker. Are either of those people present?
It's Kathy Dop Heidi, that's just what you know.
I couldn't hear.
Kathy Dop Heidi.
Yes, okay. You can either read the statement, and I don't think that they've heard it, or we can read it into the record for you. Do you have a preference?
I can read it.
Thank you. Okay, this is a statement from Kathy Dop Heidi and Greg Peters, if that's correct. And I'm just gonna read it into the record, and it's part of the agenda. Says, to whom it may concern, and by the way, I've marked this as exhibit four. We live at eight sixteen North five-hundred-and-fiftieth Avenue, and just recently learned of the proposed commercial solar energy facility. While we are very much in favor of solar energy, we do not wish to live down the road from a solar farm. We worked hard and saved our money for years to buy a home with about five acres out in the country. We wanted to see animals and have an amazing view. Solar farms belong in industrial areas and parking lots, not out in the country in a farm field. We have many concerns, such as, who is going to reimburse the neighbors of this property for possible damage to health, home, or electronics from electromagnetic radiation rays from industrial equipment used for the solar farm? What about the neighbors of this area who may be hypersensitive to electromagnetic waves? What if the solar farm catches fire? There would be air pollution and water pollution into Mill Creek, which feeds into the Mississippi River. The neighbors of this area would have health issues exacerbated. The pets and animals of this area would suffer. Will there be a fire suppression system? What about storms with large hail or high winds that may damage the glass solar panels? Where is the glass going to? Will used slash bad slash damaged toxic solar panels be responsible, responsibly recycled? Or will they be filling up landfills? What is the long-term plan for this area if Summit goes out of business or does not renew the lease? Will it just be left a toxic solar panel graveyard? What about the neighbors' property depreciation? Won't having a home close to a solar farm cause our property values to decline? Thank you for your time, Kathy Dop Heidi and Greg Peters. And Jennifer Oikr? Okay, uh, unless you object. Uh, the clerk just received these today, I think.
Um, over the last three days.
Over the last three days, so that made, one of them was today in the afternoon. That's why it wasn't submitted, uh, previously to the committee. This is from Jennifer Oikr, um, who lives at forty-one hundred Harrison Street. And she says, hello, my name is Jennifer Oikr. I received a letter from James Frekinoff, Frankenoff, excuse me, giving information about the possible permit for a commercial solar energy facility near my house and farm. I am sending this email to you as I may be unable to attend the public hearing. As a resident and owner of farm ground across from proposed solar energy farm, I would like to voice my opinion about this topic. I strongly oppose, in all capital, capital letters, this solar energy facility due to many reasons. My main concern is the increase of health risks, including cancer due to extreme amounts of energy that will be captured by the solar panels. My family, and many families in our area, had cancer or are fighting cancer right now. By allowing this permit to be passed, the overall health of those living near or directly across from this possible facility could be in jeopardy. Solar panels will also destroy the farm ground currently located on the proposed site. The destruction of quality farm ground and the entire ecosystem in the ground must be avoided. The farm ground in Adams County is too important to be.